I now call the order of the business of March 24th, 2015. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Nettie Peggian.
Present.
Kenneth Barron.
Here.
Thomas Berry is absent. Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I see we have our Commissioner Diane Webb in the audience. If she can please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we ask for the approval of the agenda, Commissioner Webb has a presentation for the Wayne County Woman of Distinction Award for Dearborn Heights. So Diane, you can come forward. There we go.
Thank you very much, Council Chairman Barron and Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. It's always an honor to do this annual presentation. March is Women's Month and it's celebrated around the world. And as a tradition in Wayne County, the Commissioners will honor a woman from their district every year. And this year, my honoree is Gertrude Basner. And Gertrude is with us today with her army of volunteers that are here to support her for this. And I would like to read the resolution and then I'm going to have you come up here with me, okay? Because I have something for you, okay? All right. A woman of distinction. Whereas it is with great pride and pleasure that we, the members of the Wayne County Commission, during this special occasion of Women's History Month, pause to recognize and bestow due honor upon Gertrude Basner, whose reputation and good deeds have ranked her among the visionary class of women who really make a difference in our community. Whereas March is designated as Women's History Month and it is a time that we pause to reflect and honor women of distinction and great accomplishment. And whereas, as a Meals on Wheels site manager, Gertrude Basner is dedicated to supporting senior citizens and families of Dearborn Heights. Gertrude not only serves up regular nutritious hot meals for homebound seniors, she delivers friendship through her many caring volunteers. Moreover, she provides resources and time of need and peace of mind to clients, caregivers, and families. And whereas, for the past 55 years, Gertrude Basner and her late husband Jerry made Dearborn Heights their home. She is a loving and caring mother of five children, Diane, Suzanne, David, Jackie, and Linda, and the proud grandmother to nine beautiful grandchildren. And whereas Gertrude Basner has a strong faith in God and is a member of St. Linus Catholic Church, she enjoys crocheting and sharing her Polish heritage and cooking techniques. Gertrude's kind and generous heart has made her a compassionate director who is sensitive to the needs of all that she works with. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Commission salutes and commends Gertrude Basner for her exemplary record of civic service and community involvement. And further be it resolved, on this 24th day of March 2015, that this resolution will be spread at length upon the Journal of the Day's proceedings to endure as a lasting record of respect and appreciation, and a suitable copy will be presented to Gertrude Basner. May her example of community service resonate among future generations and serve as a positive example of what women can accomplish. Thank you, Gertrude. Please come up and join me. Ah, you had to say that. Oh. Thank you. You're so welcome. And she's got a few words she wants to say.
First, I would like to thank the mayor, the council, for keeping the senior centers open so that I and the volunteers that work these Meals on Wheels program can continue to provide the critical service to the seniors of Dearborn Heights. I appreciate this recognition, but I could not do it without the help of my volunteers.
Thank you. Now, these are for you.
Oh, my goodness.
Diane. And this is just a little something. It's a $50 gift card for Tim Hortons because I'd like you to buy coffee and donuts for your volunteers.
Thank you. Thank you, darling.
The mayor, they like to get some pictures with the three of you if you can come around.
Thank you.
Diane, do you want to come up front to get the pictures?
Okay, good.
Okay.
If you want to come to the center for pictures, go ahead. Come to the center.
Right there.
If you want to come to the center for pictures, move over. It's all right. We'll take time. Don't worry.
Oh, you're so sweet.
Isn't she the secretary in the PD at one time? Not that I know of. Can I thank you?
All right. Wonderful. Congratulations, Gertrude.
Careful on those steps.
I can't think of her name.
Yeah, selling John Harman.
Oh. Well, on behalf of the council, you know, congratulations to us. Very, very well deserved. If you want to sit through the meeting, that's okay. But if you don't want to, you know, you're more than welcome to go off and celebrate.
Let's let them leave in peace.
No, you sit here. Yes, sure. Thank you, Diane.
Congratulations. Our next order of business is approval of the agenda in 9C. We will refer back to the administration. Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
I move that the agenda for the city council meeting of March 24th be approved to the exclusion of 9C. Refer back to the administration.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, approval of the minutes for A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March 10th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I'm sorry. I moved to approve the minutes from the March 10th, 2015, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Peggian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve Fund Transfer 6A and Current Claims 6-1 through 6-29.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven, considerations of bids, 7A, advertised for bid self-contained breathing apparatus, Fire Chief Brogan.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you. I move to approve Fire Chief Dave Brogan's request to start the bid process to purchase new self-contained breathing apparatus. Our current SCBA will expire next year. This will be purchased as part of the AFG grant, and it looks like our match for the grant would be up to $25,300 to come out of capital outline, as outlined in 7A.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Peggian. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
We might want to make it clear to the public that this is part of a grant that will be going to Dearborn. Not our money. It's matching funds and their responsibility because we wrote the grant and were responsible for handling the bidding process.
Good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, reports from the mayor, AA, from Mayor Pletko, St. Sebastian's Parish, 2015 Spring Festival Parade.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur with Mayor Pletko and approve the 2015 Spring Festival Parade route for the St. Sebastian, which will be on Saturday, May 16th, starting at 11:00 a.m., as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number nine, reports from city officials, 9A, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, M.D., State Trunk Line Contract.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Peggian.
I move to concur with Public Service Administrator Zimmer's Michigan Department of Transportation State Trunk Line Contract as presented in 9A. Attached is the MDT mowing of the right-ofways for Telegraph Michigan Avenue in our city, and the execution of this contract is required before contractor can be attained to do this work. This contractor, this contract has been reviewed by our council and approved with author's and with its approval of the mayor and its clerk, the sign on behalf of the city as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
There is a letter from the Department of Transportation on the backside of the document from which the motion was prepared, and the recommendation is to follow those instructions in that MDT contract.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I said the contents of 9A, which is considerable.
It was covered. It was covered. Just making a point to expand on the information for the general public.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9B, from Human Resource Director Sabota Perry, a letter of engagement with Nyhart for the 2015 Gatsby 45 Exorial Study.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I have a question.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Does this have to go to Gary?
No. We've had it before.
I have not reviewed this one, and it does have an indemnification and limitation of liability provision, which, and a dispute resolution provision, and these things sometimes raise flags for me. So I'd recommend approving it subject to my review.
That'll work. Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the engagement letter from Nyhart Actuary and Employee Benefit Consulting Group and have the mayor authorize the mayor to sign it pending the review of Corporation Council.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kaczynski. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, reports from the mayor, AA, from Mayor Pletko, St. Sebastian's Parish, 2015 Spring Festival Parade.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur with Mayor Pletko and approve the 2015 Spring Festival Parade route for the St. Sebastian, which will be on Saturday, May 16th, starting at 11:00 a.m., as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number nine, reports from city officials, 9A, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, M.D., State Trunk Line Contract.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Peggian.
I move to concur with Public Service Administrator Zimmer's Michigan Department of Transportation State Trunk Line Contract as presented in 9A. Attached is the MDT mowing of the right-ofways for Telegraph Michigan Avenue in our city, and the execution of this contract is required before contractor can be attained to do this work. This contractor, this contract has been reviewed by our council and approved with author's and with its approval of the mayor and its clerk, the sign on behalf of the city as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
There is a letter from the Department of Transportation on the backside of the document from which the motion was prepared, and the recommendation is to follow those instructions in that MDT contract.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I said the contents of 9A, which is considerable.
It was covered. It was covered. Just making a point to expand on the information for the general public.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9B, from Human Resource Director Sabota Perry, a letter of engagement with Nyhart for the 2015 Gatsby 45 Exorial Study.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I have a question.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Does this have to go to Gary?
No. We've had it before.
I have not reviewed this one, and it does have an indemnification and limitation of liability provision, which, and a dispute resolution provision, and these things sometimes raise flags for me. So I'd recommend approving it subject to my review.
That'll work. Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the engagement letter from Nyhart Actuary and Employee Benefit Consulting Group and have the mayor authorize the mayor to sign it pending the review of Corporation Council.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kaczynski. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number D, from Recreation Director Greible, request to prohibit selling of non-authorized persons at the Spirit Fest 2015 festivals. Councilwoman Peggian.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with our Parks Recreation Director Greible in his request to prohibit the selling of non-authorized persons at the Spirit Festival in 2015. That the council make a resolution prohibiting not only the selling of products and services on the grounds, but also in the surrounding area of the festival.
It was approved by the Spirit Committee.
And approved by the Spirit.
Unless then approved by.
Less than they are approved by the Spirit Committee.
Outlined in 9D.
Outlined in 9D.
Support is outlined.
And support by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
There is a line in here suggesting that there needs to be approval by the Festival Committee for any variations of this resolution. Do, is Mr. Greible here?
No.
Okay. And you are?
Yeah.
You're standing so far away, I can hardly see you. But I recognize the voice. Has there ever been any organization that approached for permission to conduct any kind of selling at all?
Basically, the ones that we've had come in would be the people with the little trucks trying to come in, and the ice cream trucks, and the food vendors, people like that. The organizations that sell, we have in our food groups at the festival, and we have like D7 and the soccer group and groups like that that sell food. But those are approved.
So essentially, you haven't had any inquiries or requests for conducting some activity?
Well, we have in the past, but I mean, that's why we go through and do this with city councils, so that we are able to turn them away, because we like to try to sell the food from the community organizations so that they have a chance to, you know, have a profit.
Thank you.
It's usually done surreptitiously. They show up without.
No, 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 no. No, there's no surreptition here.
I'm saying, this is what this is to prevent.
They show up and they're gone.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number E, from Emergency Management Director M. Krapp, Spring/Summer 2015 Dearborn Heights Today Newsletter.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
Move council concur with Mr. Rance Krapp with regard to a request of the council to advance authorized certain activities for the preparation of the newspaper in the amount of $7,900 in gross. That's spread over two expenses, all documented and approved for the attached in item 9E.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
I'll just wait till the end.
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 13, new business, 13A, business license renewal for Carreras Cucina Italian, 6565 North Telegraph.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Peggian.
I move to approve of the business license for Carreras Cucina Italian Restaurant located at 6565 North Telegraph Road as outlined in 13A.
Support. Support by Councilwoman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 13B, business license renewal for La Marra Auto Sales, 8230 North Telegraph.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
Move council approve this business license of La Marina Auto Sales at the Telegraph location, all according to the document of 13B.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 13C, solicitation license for American Legion Auxiliary Carl East St., Unit 232.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Peggian.
I move to approve of the Veterans' Poppy Day Sale on May 2nd, 2015, at the Corner of Warren and Telegraph Roads on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary Carl East St., Unit Number 232, as outlined in 13C.
Support. Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number D, solicitation license for the Private John Lescower, William Turo, Post Number 7546, Veterans of Foreign Wars.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the application for solicitation license for Private John Lescower, William Turo, Veterans of Foreign War, Post 7546. The dates run Thursday, May 7th, Friday, May 8th, and Saturday, May 9th, 2015, as outlined in 13D.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
They don't indicate a location.
He just said various.
So they're all, I just want to know a location. Thank you.
They want the whole thing.
Any further discussion?
Every corner.
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This ends our regular portion of our meeting. Is there anything that comes from the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes, thank you. Just want to make a quick announcement. The Qantas Club of Dearborn Heights, the annual citywide Easter egg hunt co-sponsored by our Parks and Recreation Department, will be on Saturday, April 4th, at the Canfield Center, which is located at 1801 North Beach Daily, so just south of Ford Road at Beach Daily, at Canfield Center. Again, that's Saturday, April 4th, at 11:00 a.m. So that is for children up to age of 10. The other second announcement I wanted to share is office hours for the month of April. The first set of office hours, which will be the first Monday, April 6th, at the Berwin Senior Center, and the, excuse me, first Tuesday, April 7th, at the Eaton Senior Center, 10:00 a.m. for both of those. We will be discussing and providing information on Proposal 1, which of course is the May 5th ballot question. So just want to invite anyone who wants to receive some information. We will have information available for you. I want to thank our state representative Julie Plowicki, who met with me to discuss this further, along with the Michigan Municipal League and Southeast Michigan Council Governments, for sharing some valuable insight and discussion as well as resources. So that will be available to all of our residents on April 6th and 7th. Thank you.
Anything else from the council members?
And our Qantas Easter egg hunt, there won't, there's no charge to any of the participants.
Thank you. Yes.
Flyers went out to the local schools.
Yes.
Nothing further? Mayor, did you have anything?
I have three items. One is I'll be testifying tomorrow for legislation, House Bill 4033, which was introduced by Kurt Heisey, and that would prohibit a county from selling sewers, wastewater treatment plants without the permission of the communities that it services. So hopefully that legislation will get passed. Secondly, a person who came for years to the meeting, Manny Aegis, is very ill, and I know that he enjoys watching them, and hopefully he'll be out of the hospital and home watching, but Manny, on behalf of all of us, get well quickly. Finally, I'm going to pass these out. We have entered into discussions, there's two different kinds of copies, but just take one, with a company, and this would replace our newsletter eventually. They publish now, it's a group out of Taylor, they did tailor, they're negotiating what winded, and the publication is very user-friendly, I guess, or it's appealing. And so this will give you an idea, and we'll be coming back before we enter into any agreements. But we think this would be a real nice upgrade to the newsletter we have now. And they, the profit motive in the group that does this, they do provide some print and assistance, but they sell ads, and they feel that by getting many of the downriver communities, they'll be able to sell multiple publications, similar to what some church bulletins have, where they will get some discounts if you go into two or three. This will allow us to have, we believe, a more appealing publication, and we're anxious to get started in it, but this gives you an idea of what would be coming.
Would this be something that they might come and give a little presentation on, or...
We can certainly have them do that. Right now, we're in the talking stage, and Bob, anything else that you...
There's a video, Councilmembers. One more addition to the mayor's comment is that this publication comes out four times a year, as opposed to our current publication, which comes out twice.
We just approved the budget for...
There's going to be some transition in some time, so this was not to confuse what you approved. It's rather to tell you what that, we're going to eventually do a significant upgrade, and it's coming.
Yeah, the quality of the paper is, you know, much better.
And he's willing to cover the costs, and of course, if he can sell enough ads, then he's going to make money at it, and he believes he can do that.
Like you said, like the Time Magazine format, as opposed to our, it's very readable.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
Who would shoulder the responsibility of soliciting the ads? The city can get involved in that.
No, no. If you look in the front cover, the gentleman is Paul Borg, B-O-R-G, and Paul is very active in the Maltese Club in southeastern Michigan, and the club's out of Oakwood or Oakman.
Oakman.
That's right. You remember. And so he is the one, he underwrites it, and he has a marketing staff, he also has a type setter and editorial staff that will help and assist us.
That is correct. Yeah, they have, right now, they have two full-time salespeople that sell ads, and as the mayor mentioned, they have a full staff of grand artists. It's going to cut out a pretty hefty chunk of ads.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up question. I think that's great. It's really nice to look at. Like you said, it's appealing. I like the fact that it's quarterly, so that way we're getting information out to residents. Would the intent still be to mail it? Because I see there's a mailing spot.
Yes, yeah.
And again, quarterly, yeah.
We would still mail, and then the other thing is annually, there's the water department thing, and that would be one of the items that would get included in one of the, I don't know when that comes out, in the summer, but that would be one of the items that would be still included. And what we might do is, given this change in the format, maybe not every department is going to be in every single one of these, but it would for like recreation, allow us to more accurately match events to the season. And then one month, it might be a feature with, let's say, the Treasurer's Office, and then the following month. I don't know that, well, being an accountant, I think the Controller's Office ought to be featured. maybe not every department is going to be in every single one of these. But it would, for like recreation, allow us to more accurately match events to the season. And then one month, it might be a feature with, let's say, the Treasurer's Office, and then the following month. I don't know that, well, being an accountant, I think the Controller's Office ought to be featured. I'm not sure we're going to get on, that fence is going to get on the cover, but who knows? But it just, we think that this is really going to go over very successfully with residents. So we wanted to give you a copy to see what it looks like.
And more to keep in mind also, remember that we're still going to be in control of the copy, or the articles, things of that nature. We're going to be producing those, I'll be producing them, and forwarding them over to the folks. So we will need to maintain the control on that part.
Are we going to see a reduction in our cost from 9,000 to 5? Because what he's doing, he's advertising with auto dealers, and they don't care whether it's just in the core, in the town that they're selling.
Right.
Because he's going to sell to dealers in certain sections, much like Value Pack that works in, I have a friend of mine, it's a salesman. You can go to Value Pack and decide what, where in the world you want. You could draw your own line within certain restrictions. So as a bigger advertiser, he goes to them and.
The fact that this will underwrite the entire cost of.
Well, yeah, that's why I asked the question, because nobody said anything about that. So you can't go wrong with that. We get twice as much coverage in a better format for less.
The only trade-off is.
Does that say nothing? It could be less.
Thank you.
Okay.
And of course, you'll be hearing more about it. Because we'll have to develop a contract. We'll be bringing that to folks for a order as well.
Sure. Okay. Was that it, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Lord Pachavas, do you have, let us know what's happening?
We're about five to six weeks out from the election, May the 5th. All polls will be open. Summit at 8:00. We're in the process of processing your absentee applications. If you need an absentee application, please call us, 791-3432. We will be mailing them out next week. Please, 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 if you did apply for an absentee ballot and you do not get it by the second week of April, call us. Don't wait till the day before the election or the day after the election, saying, "I never got my ballot." Call us, we will get you a ballot. We still have applications for the council positions. We're still taking applications for poll workers. So if you have any questions related to anything regarding elections, 791-3432. And I thank you so very much. And also, please, remember when you send your ballots in, sign the envelope so we don't have to mail it back. Sign, everybody's been doing a great job on the applications, so sign those envelopes, and we really appreciate it. Thanks so much. And Manny, God bless you, and we're praying for you.
Thank you. Then at this point, does anyone have any announcements, or things happening in the city?
Hello, council chair and mayor. Just wanted to mention a quick upcoming program. Next Tuesday, March 31st, at 7:00 p.m. at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will be having a program on the life and times of William Shakespeare. Join Jim Glenn as he sets the bard against a rich backdrop of Elizabethan times. The presentation will include a biographical summary of his boyhood, schooling, and influences that sculpted his later works. More to come in the weeks to follow. That's all for now. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything happening, going on in the city? Okay, if not, then at this point, if anyone has any quest, oops. If anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them to me. If you would like to talk to another council member, the mayor, or department head, let me know, and I will ask him or her if they would like to respond. Since Councilman Barry is not here today, I will be keeping track of the time. You will have three minutes to talk. If we respond, we pause after you give your name, the street you live on, and the city that you live in. So at this particular point, if anyone has anything wish before us, just come up to the microphone, and we'll make sure everyone gets a chance to talk. Go ahead.
My name is Pat Alvarado. I live at, on Mayfair Street. I've been there since, wow, I'm going to cry, since 1987. I can't go out in my backyard because of a vicious pit bull next door to me. I have a picture. I've called the city three times. The city came out once and found out the dog has a license, or what, registration, whatever they do. And that's it. There's, I can show you a picture of the dog. There's nothing but a piece of lattice holding him in the yard, or her in the yard. I've got other pictures where she climbs the fence to get to me. I don't know what to do. It's a rental house. The people always, "Oh gee, I'm sorry, I'll get her in the house." "Oh gee, I'm sorry, I'll put her on the chain." She literally chewed through the chain. So he said he'll get a bigger chain.
When Jack is ill, in fact, it seems like every day this week, I'm losing another department head with some kind of flu symptoms. And Jack's been out Monday, and Chrissy was left today. I'm not sure how we're going to respond. I mean, Jack probably is aware of it, ordinance control, but.
Mister Chairman.
I don't know if there's anybody out there that would. No.
That's what's holding this pit bull back.
Oh, huh.
Yeah.
That's the fence between your yard and your neighbor's yard?
Like her house and my fence, you know? And then the regular fence is just a chain link fence.
Is it a younger dog? It looks younger in the picture.
She's a couple of years old. She's had a litter already.
Does she charge the fence and growl at you?
She climbs over the chain link fence.
Can you give me your name, phone number, and address?
If I go, when I go to get in my car, I have to run and get in my car, because, you know, where she's at is right here, and my car is like empty.
Do you have the address with you?
Mister Chairman.
Well, if she gives me her address, we should be able to find, unless you know the address of the house.
I've called the landlord. He won't respond. I don't know what else to do.
Well, we'll look into it.
My son's a police officer, so he said that I should do this, so that's what I'm doing.
Has the dog bit anybody in the neighborhood, or has been any incidents with?
No.
Has it gotten away?
She's gotten out a couple of times, you know, because the gate on the other side, where you would pull your car in, that one leans out like this, so she can get through there. So they stack junk there, you know, so she can't get out. But she gets out any, and the other, there's two of them. The other one gets out, the other one is ambitious. But this one, she's vicious. I have the address, the other house.
I'll do it.
5431. It's right next door to me.
Okay, that's, if you need to go home. And the street again?
Mayfair.
That you live, Mayfair, okay.
Okay, we'll follow up on it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Watch your step.
Mister Chairman, I want to say something.
Councilman Opiegan?
We just spent a lot of time, you know, the dog lovers, making sure we did the right thing. I think we need to find out if fences have to be chain link fences, or whether they have to be six feet tall if they're, we're trying to contain animals. You're not going to contain a lot of animals with a four-foot thing. Now, Lisa knows more about this. When we had all this sympathy about what we should do, and the dog lovers came, and they were, you know, "Don't ban my dog," you tell us, what provisions did we make?
Well, we have an ordinance written for that vicious dog ordinance, which addresses not just breed, it's not breed-specific legislation. It addresses the behavior of the animal and holds a dog owner accountable, which is what that ordinance did. So the mayor's going to follow up, and it's a matter of that enforcement of going out there, and also education for the dog owner.
I don't remember.
So, you know, there's a step-by-step process. If you review that ordinance and take a look at that, you can see, it's really well-written, actually. I mean, it's well-done. We had, Michigan Humane Society was involved in that process, as well as Friends of the Dearborn Animal Shelter. So it's well-written, and again, it addresses the behavior of the dog and what it has already exhibited. And I think somebody asked the question, "Did it bite somebody? Is it running at large?" I mean, I would be concerned with the security of that fence. And that's for the dog owner, as well as the dog and you, and all the neighborhood. I mean, this is a public safety issue. Put aside the animal lover piece, let's talk about public safety. And that's really what it's, it addresses the heart of that issue. And so it's a matter of follow-up, and I think that will happen. You'll see that with our animal control officer and our ordinance officers. They do a great job, and they should be able to come out and respond to that, I think.
This is from like last fall and last summer, the last two calls, and nobody came?
Yeah. And now we have the ECO in place, and then that happened, what was it, August, September, something like that, of 2014. And that, that new piece is really hitting the ground running. And so we're seeing some great changes in that direction happening, improvements. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I would anticipate, I'm sure the mayor, you will talk to them, they'll get someone out there, so. Yeah, and she's, some of them are liquors and lovers, and yeah. It's a behavior thing that you address, and it's not breed-specific. It has to be, you can have a German Shepherd, you can have a Doberman, you can have any kind of breed that can be, you know, aggressive. It just, you have to address the behavior. Yeah, yeah. She may not be around public enough. Yeah, there's, yeah. So not to get off subject, but there could be a number of reasons why she is. I mean, if she's isolated, if she's put on a chain all the time, we do have a tethering ban as well, because that creates isolation for dogs, which creates more aggression when they do get at large, because they're scared, it becomes fight or flight. So there's several things we can address with that.
I don't care why she's.
Right, that's right. Absolutely.
I would do.
Yep.
We'll hire a dog psychiatrist next.
Okay, ma'am?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Councilors and Mister Mayor, my name is Irene Rabarek. I live on 6950 Cronin Drive. Last year in October, city gave my neighbor, Mister Mandal, who live on 7012 Cronin, permit, permit for putting a fence in the side of my house. The ordinance is, he have to have approval from me. He put the fence, he damaged my, I can show you pictures, how the fence look, his, my side look before the fence, and how is looking still now.
Talk to this lady.
My question is, how I supposed to maintain the site? I take a pride of my property, and you can see in the first picture, how my grass, how in the side look, how is looking now. I went few times to the city. The ordinance telling me, "No, he did the right thing." I look on the computer and I see what the ordinance is. This is not the first time he damaged my property. I'm cutting the grass, he's hosing me down. I cleaned the leaves, he called the police. Police came with the four cars, like I'm a criminal. I live in this house for 17 years. For 10 years, I don't have a problem. Every time I'm try, even March, you know, I call. It's like a circle. They sending me, I feel they discriminate me. They violate my citizen rights. I pay my taxes. So I have a right. I obey the ordinance and the law. Why this neighbor, it's think he is above the law? No house in the whole city have a fence like this, and the other neighbor can maintain the site.
Personally, just by looking at these pictures, I know in the fence ordinance, it says, if the neighbor that is against the driveway, you know, it has to be two foot off. It doesn't look like it's that even. So this, I don't even know if this is a proper fence, but.
And he damage, he damaged my landscaping, he damaged the bricks.
Yeah, so maybe if you can give your.
And another issue is, Mister Mayor, five months ago, I called you. You called me back. You say you're going to investigate. How long I'm going to wait for the investigation? You know what's going on. Another Freedom of Information Act, I signed because I want it. I have a right. What kind of permit he put from the moment he move in? He have a concrete, and last year putting an Memorial Weekend without permit. I called the ordinance, I talk, that time he don't have a permit. Few weeks ago, the ordinance told me, "Oh, he have a permit."
This has to be two.
Why I don't have the information? I have a right to know.
Yeah, we would certainly not hold that. I don't know, at the request of the Freedom, and maybe subsequently, that's what generated the permit. I don't know. I would like to see the pictures.
Another violation. He constantly park cars and cars, I'm passing the pictures. Breaking the ordinance, blocking the sidewalk. Cars, it's a dealership in my street. It's hard to coming out from the driveway, because we don't see any cars who's coming from Ashley. It's on and on.
Well, you can't park across the sidewalk.
And the police is telling me it's a neighbor's dispute. It's a neighbor. I never damage his property.
I have to say, that's been going on for a long.
For long, since he move in.
There's an internal thing here that I will share.
I provide the pictures, they telling me I have to put the video. I don't have the money. If I have a video, they're going to tell me something else.
She's right.
Yeah, okay, yeah. If you can give. The mayor, you know, your address and all, and the phone number. Would it be okay if they hold the pictures? Okay, that's Mohammed from the Building Department.
Mister Chairman, I have a question. Mister Chairman, I have a question.
Councilman Opiegan?
I don't know if this is true. When a neighbor wants to build a fence.
You have to dress the chair.
That's what I'm saying.
Councilman Opiegan?
She mentioned when a, when a neighbor wants to build a fence, they usually inform the people that are adjacent to them. Is it true that if the neighbor doesn't want a fence, that the person, you know, party A cannot build it? I didn't, I didn't, I don't know that.
My understanding is that if you, Mohammed can explain, but if you put the fence on your property, if you put it right on the line, you might have to, but Mohammed.
Here's the situation. The ordinance, I think it was about four or five years, that's the latest version of the fence ordinance. A neighbor does not need to have the consent of his neighbor to put a privacy fence, unless they have to remove the fence that's a chain link that's in between. They are allowed to install a fence on their own property, not attached to the old one. And they would be responsible for the maintaining of the grass they would have. Like on those privacies where it's about four or five inches high, they have the responsibility of cleaning the weeds between the two fences.
No. Okay, but I thought. Mister Opiegan, one moment, please. Okay, but Mohammed, I thought in that ordinance, we changed it when, because of these homes that have these real skinny driveways and the fence, that they had, if the homeowner that doesn't have the driveway that's next to it, wants to put it up, they have to put it two foot in on their property to allow the cars to open.
Okay, that would be from the rear to the front.
That's correct, that's correct. Yes, yes. But apparently, this pictures don't look that way.
Hold on, I'll take a look at it.
Oh, okay, okay, good. Yeah, but in the back, yeah, okay. Okay, but we'll check into that.
He can put in the gate and the fence with existing chain fence, but he went all the way to end of my house.
That's what we're going to check on. Okay, and you've got the address, Mayor, and?
Oh, yeah, and 6950 Cronin.
Cam, it has to be two feet?
From the house out. Okay. Anyone else wish to bring?
Hello. Not a homeowner. I'm a renter for five years.
The name, the street you live on?
5721 Vernon. My name is Cynthia Kosis. I went on the website also. And on the website, it says, "Any structure that becomes a fire, wind, or other natural disaster, or physically deteriorated, is no longer habitable, should be properly repaired or removed." When I moved in, I made sure that there was an inspection done. While my landlord was not going, he told me that there was one. When I called the city, the city said, "That was for the old tenant. You're a new tenant? A new inspection has to be done." He was cited for the garage, for the floor of the garage, and for the driveway. Nothing was done. My landlord said that he couldn't afford it. He had three companies come out, and they all said, "This cannot be repaired. It's got to be torn down. It's that bad." I let it go. I've been there five years. Last summer, I now have. Last summer, I now have holes, huge holes in the ceiling of the garage. Water pours in when it rains, water pours in when the snow melts, there, it's rotting away, boards are falling down from the ceiling. My landlord still refused to do anything about it. I got ahold of the city, Mr. McIntyre, he's who I started out with. He helped me out, and, um, I pulled the inspections, or I had to send in for the inspections, because another one was done in 2012. And after I talked to Mr. McIntyre after that one, he said, "The inspection in 2012, they should have pulled the one that was done when I moved in, not the previous one before me." And when I got these back, my inspection is not in there with the garage on it, where the garage was cited. When I called Mr. McIntyre that day, he said, "It's in there. I saw it, they should have pulled it, the garage is on there. If they would have pulled it, they would have known that the garage was on there." I have a meeting this afternoon with the mayor, I'm going to bring this up, and I said, "Thank you very much." So then I waited, I didn't hear anything. So then, I finally talk, called them again, he said, "It's been turned over to the building director," because he's the ordinance, "it's been turned over to the building director." I get a call from Mr. Sob, Sob?
Mohammed, right here.
Is that you?
No, I didn't call them.
Oh, no, 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 I've got it on my phone, I've got a voicemail on my phone.
I got a call from...
Your voice, you said, "That's who I am," and you said, "There's nothing on this report that says the garage is on there."
What's not, and I'd like to see that.
Okay, all right. Then, so I proceeded to call Mr. Sob back after that. I called on, you called me on March twentieth, at, no, you called me on February sixteenth at three-twenty in the afternoon, that's what my phone says. I called you back on two-seventeen, two-eighteen, and then I waited a month and called back again on three-eighteen. I have not gotten any phone calls back at all. Mr. McIntyre, I called him again, and he said, "I'm going to the mayor again, and I'm going to bring it up to the mayor again, he knows about this." Okay, waited, I still have not heard nothing. This garage is going to collapse any minute, that's how bad it is. You see the pictures, it is rotted wood. My attorney has a, or my landlord has a handyman, my handyman came out there and he had to repair a pipe. He said, "I will talk to him and see if he'll let me reinforce a little bit, so it won't collapse this winter on you." My landlord said, "No, he is not allowed to touch that garage." So now, I have a garage that when you actually, if they, the inspection in 2012, if you couldn't get into my garage, because it looks like I've got a padlock on it, my garage is tilting this way. The one picture, it's bowing out like that, so if they did an inspection, what did they inspect? Not the garage? Didn't anybody go out there and see that that garage is bowing on the one side completely, and that there's holes in the roof? You can't miss those holes. My neighbor points them out to me. When is this garage gonna fall? Jeez, I don't know, the garage leans this way.
Can see by the pictures, Cynthia, can you just meet with Mohammed, or...
Here's the, there's a couple things that have happened in regards to this. She's not underestimating the condition of the garage, I went out to look at it.
You did?
McIntyre asked me to go, and I went out last week, and I saw it. In addition, we have pictures that are clearer than this, and I don't know exactly how we got the pictures, if we, if it's, but they're almost like an aerial that shows the collapse of the, the roof structure, so there's no question. The, Jack and I both called to find out from, not Gary, but our other city attorney, and he said that for issues dealing with safety and health, that we can go in and inspect that we don't need, there, it's an emergency, and under the law, we can go in, and so, um...
I told Mr. McIntyre, go, you can go in the garage, the padlock's not locked, go in.
Yeah, I saw the padlock, there also looks like the, there's almost like two slabs, and they've kinda heaved in a funny way, but the, the fact of the matter is, the structure is very dangerous, needs to be removed, and it's just now, how, how we end up doing it, and...
Okay, then, but my question is, why didn't they pull the, um, the report or the inspection that was done when I moved in? I moved in in less than a year, so he had to do two inspections in one year.
Yeah.
I'm sure he wasn't happy about that.
That I have not got an answer for you now.
Mr. McIntyre says he saw it.
An answer?
Number one, okay, we have two sheets of inspections, and the garage is on one of the sheets, it's one of the wardrobes, so, you know, cannot be removed by itself. Number two, I still do insist that I have not spoken to the lady here, it could have been, because I looked at it immediately when I complained.
Can I get my phone, so I can play back the phone call?
Just wait, let him finish, let him finish.
I looked at the inspection, and I saw one of our inspectors did the inspection throughout, so I said, "Here, take a look at this, go take a look at it, you signed off on it, tell the lady what needs to be done." And that's where it stood at that time. I don't wanna name the inspector, but his initials are on the inspection.
Yeah, I, I think, having seen it, Mohammed, it probably looks like, if, if we don't have it taken down, it's gonna come down, and then it could cause some damage. I mean, it's, it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get near the, the site.
I understand that, but I did, at that time, I looked at who, who performed the inspection, and it's still clear. And I did approach the inspector, I said, "You performed this, eventually you missed one item, okay, the claimant of the garage." I did not go there, I said, "Go back, talk to the tenant or the landlord, and see how you're gonna resolve it." And that was it.
Okay, so then, we'll get together.
We're in the process, and I know that, that, I'm not gonna ask her for patience, but we need, we know what needs to be done, and we're gonna get there.
Okay, yeah, we'll be working on it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. Is that okay?
Mr. Piggin?
Yeah. Um, this is a legal question, I was always under the, Gary can answer it, I was always under the assumption that in the case of this woman, she rented a house that has a garage, assuma, assumably, it was supposed to be a garage for your use, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and I was under the assumption that a renter can hold his rent, and then use that money to make the corrections that are required in the house, like, I'm holding the rent for the next, I don't know how many months, this garage is gonna be torn down, this pavement has to be fixed, and it's too bad that you would have to do that, seems to me, the city should go over there and condemn the thing, and whether he's got the money or can afford it or not is irrelevant, it has to be done, and he needs to be, he should be penalized, it should be assessed on his taxes, you should not have to suffer through that, because you're a renter. Now, I don't know if that's law, Gary, that a person can hold his rent and make the corrections themselves, and this show that, "I've spent $2,000 to fix your garage and your driveway, and that's, and it took the rent for the last eight months to do it, thank you very much, you should be glad, you don't have any money, I took care of it," is there such a thing?
Well, there is an ability to withhold, but I would not want to end up addressing something kind of in a vacuum in, in this type of situation. I would address it from the city's angle, which is, we've had these issues, and we've been going after them more aggressively since we've ended up having the Department of Ordinance Enforcement, but then you end up having sometimes an issue, like for example today, we had ended up receiving an order in the past to order property to be vacated. Property had, is in very bad condition, it's not really habitable. The person who owns the property has had it for six years, maybe seven years, without a certificate of occupancy, and then it was discovered that he did not have a certificate of occupancy, and so we ended up saying, "You've got a certain amount of time to get a cert, certificate of occupancy." He did not comply, we ended up getting an order to say that the property has to be vacated, but then the tenant ended up, he turned around and evicted the tenant, which frankly, the tenant should not be living in the property.
Right.
And now the judge and I addressed this issue today, in terms of how much time this individual could have to basically be able to move out. So, some of these issues are issues where the tenant's not necessarily going to, like in this situation, there has been some discussion that I know that I was involved in with respect to this particular property, and my advice has been essentially, we should be looking at a demolition, if the property is not immediately brought up to code, and I don't know that it even can be.
Can, yeah, that's the point, it can't be...
In which case, it should just be, it should be demolished. In which case, then, the tenant loses the value of the, of the garage, and has to make some adjustment with the landlord.
I don't care if I lose the garage, I have grandchildren, and I won't even let them go in my backyard, because...
Sure.
...if this garage decides to fall, when they're back there playing with a ball.
But, but the point is, is that, like in this situation, I know, I'm not sure, there was some discussion with this, and I know that I was involved in it with, with Mark, and basically, the game plan was to gather some more information, and then to be looking at demolition, is my recollection with respect to it. And there might be some additional things that could potentially end up happening, but I do not want to end up saying those things, because they have to do with some things that are attorney-client privilege for the city, and to be frank, they, they may have some ramifications for the tenant and the, and the landlord that I wouldn't want to discuss in public.
Okay, so the mayor, when Jack's back, you'll get with him and Mohammed and...
We're, we'll, we just talked, well, somebody be going out tomorrow on this garage right away, but...
I'm going out tomorrow, because I'm here sick, but I'm sorry, but...
Yeah, can, can we keep these pictures, or you wanna back? But, but, yeah, it, it, she's not underestimating the condition of the garage.
Yeah, I would agree.
I saw it with my own eyes.
Be sure and notify your landlord in writing that...
I notify him every time I send him off a rent shop.
In writing and...
In writing.
Good.
What are you gonna do about the garage? What are you gonna do about the garage? I sent some pictures. These are the pictures of the garage. What are you gonna do about the garage?
Okay, good, good.
Can I ask a question on the turn, I'm sorry, but, you know, we're all taxpayers, you know, and pay our bills and try to keep things, and we've got slum lords coming in and buying up all these houses, and it's almost like, there's nothing we can do about it. Like the dog next door, that's a rental, the one next, and the same guy owns these houses, and he does nothing.
Yeah, but they're required to get a certificate of occupancy, and if, if they're not, and sometimes, we don't know. Just call, call us, call any of our members up here, we'll check out to see if they get a C of O, and if the property has been inspected and brought up to code. C of O in the tenant's name.
Well, and, and that's one of the problems, is that a lot of people who are engaging in these actions are not advising the city, they are not getting the inspections, and then all of a sudden, several years later, we become aware of this, and they either have a C of O that is long expired in terms of that particular tenant, or they've switched tenants around, and then they try to do that on an ongoing basis. And we've made great strides in terms of enforcement, uh, in the recent...
Well, I think they're for five years. I mean, it's my home, I may not own it, but I was a homeowner for twenty years, it's my home.
But you can, you should be a part of this home.
But, yeah, there, there should have been the proper channels followed, and it doesn't sound like it was, so we'll look into it and...
Sure.
And correct it. Okay, anyone else wish to, Troy?
Troy Brown, two-three-four-two-zero Hanover Street. My friend there, Ray, is handing out something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to address the city council tonight. Out of the Tuesday meeting, just as a backdrop to this, out of the Tuesday meeting last week of the flood meeting, I, I realized that, that we need to do some immediate things, and I wanna thank our other corporate, corporate council, who did a great job explaining the city's legal efforts up to 2010 or 11. But out of that, I realized that maybe I need to help and help city council a little, and maybe put myself in your shoes and, and do some writing. So, I, I'm, I was aware of some letters that were written back in May concerning a loan that, you know, that, and so I used this word. I'm not a lawyer, I'll learn lawyer lingo, lingo if I have to, I'm certainly not an English teacher, and my wife didn't have time to proofread this, so I only gave her a few hours. So, it's not a, a literal, it's not a work of English, but it's certainly one that I'm asking the city council to consider, because as evidenced last week, this situation is getting worse. And as I learned last night at a meeting, we forgot all about what's happening out west of us, in this big shopping mall that's proposed at Vining, Vining Road, which will affect the north branch of the Ecorse Creek. So, with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take and read my proposal, and again, just to make sure you guys are aware, I'm not asserting your authority, I'm writing this as if I was sitting in your chair, honoring the mayor, honoring the administration, but compelled to do something because of August eleventh, 2014, and the other floods. So I write, "A proposal for the City of Dearborn Heights resolution, the adoption of official request for injunction to order all entities, public and private, to immediately cease the discharge of sewage, C S O, and hazardous materials into the north branch of the Ecorse Creek drain until Phase One of the Spicer Group's Greenway Plan is fully implemented. Presented to judge presiding over the consent agreement on March twenty-fifth, 2015." I wrote, "This is if you're gonna go tomorrow, I expect you to act tomorrow, might not happen, but I can expect it. At the meeting of the city council of Dearborn Heights, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, held at council chambers on March twenty-fourth, 2015, a resolution to request from the judge presiding, an injunction to accomplish the following protection of Dearborn Heights residents and their properties. An injunction request is as follows: The court to order all entities, public and private, to immediately and temporarily cease the discharge of all sewage, C S O, and hazard materials into the north branch of the Ecorse Creek drain. This is applicable to both dry and wet weather conditions, applicable before, during, and after a rain event, applicable in emergency and non-emergency conditions. This is to include all facilities and all bodies of government. This injunction is to include all sewage facilities and detention basins or ponds in operation that have any outfall structure located within the Ecorse, uh, north branch of the Ecorse Creek Drainage District, or any of its tributaries. This is applicable to any and all new construction in the north branch of the Ecorse Creek Drainage District. Whereas, the city council of the Dearborn Heights does hereby find as follows: Whereas, the discharge and descri, as described, is the cause for systematic and catastrophic flooding of the residents of the south end of Dearborn Heights. I'm sorry. And systematic and catastrophic contamination in the north branch of the Ecorse Creek. Whereas, the current and projected flows are now a physical danger to our residents. Whereas, the current and projected level of contamination has made the waters of the north branch of the Ecorse Creek drain unfit for human contact at any level. Whereas, the County of Wayne has failed to act upon the findings of the Spicer Report and Greenway Solution, since the official report was submitted to and officially received by the County of Wayne in the year 2008. Whereas, the threat to Dearborn Heights residents has elevated to a real possibility of loss of life or severe illness as recorded on August eleventh, 2014. Whereas, the elected officials of the City of Dearborn Heights see no progress being made to correct this real, current, and sustained threat to our residents. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the City of Dearborn Heights, that this resolution and letter of request for an injunction is drafted and presented to the judge presiding on March twenty-fifth, 2015, by the corporate, Corporation Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, and as directed by the current administration. That's, with, I just wanna say one thing.
Go ahead.
That's what I would expect that this body would have done every year since 2008. But since it hasn't, I'm helping you, and I'm pleading you, with you, to take this, table it, vote on it tonight, because... Because it's only gonna get worse. It's not gonna get any better.
Yeah, well, this is something that I know Mayor, you know,
This is Chairman.
Involved, and Gary, I don't, I know that's something that we, I don't know what we, we can and can't, I know we have a lot of things going right now, but.
This is, this predates everything, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
This pre- 2008.
Uh, this is a high priority. In light of the meeting that we had last Tuesday, both of our attorneys, Mr. McCully and Gary Miyake, have already drafted and have talked about re-entering back into court. I'll be more than happy.
Gary, sorry. We, we sent a, a letter today to Zina Elhassan, who's Corporation Counsel for Wayne County, with a copy of the consent agreement, with a copy of, basically some other documentation, and requesting that we have a status conference and expecting to hear back from her within the next 10 days.
Yeah.
Which I think is a reasonable timeframe under the circumstances. And then we would go back before Judge Colombo, in the fashion that we discussed over at the study session, to try to address these issues and to make sure that we have some movement. But also not to do so in a way that's gonna end up being potentially counterproductive and cause more difficulties and potentially cause just adversarial actions as opposed to getting some cooperation, which we've ended up getting progress in that fashion.
So Troy, we're doing that.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time.
Maybe not exactly, but we're doing that.
And next, next meeting, I'll have, I'll have maybe a proposal for how to finance this. Because they're hiding behind the federal financing that's gonna take 10 years to get anything done. And you know what? August 11th, 2014 shows us that this is a real threat. I'm sorry, Mr. Miyake, we, we, we have to risk it. We have to risk offending the county. We have to risk offending the other cities. We're drowning. And it's only gonna get worse.
Well, Mr. Chairman, no one is, no one is indicating that we are going to sit on our hands and not address this issue. But everyone must recognize that there have been problems with this that have not been ended up being addressed until this council and this mayor had basically moved to the Chapter Eight proceedings, which could have been done for decades before by other councils and other administrations and weren't. And these things take time. And all it takes is one circuit court judge to basically say, they're trying and I find that to be good enough and I have discretion. And if you want to challenge my discretion in the Court of Appeals, then go for it, Mr. Miyake, because essentially, it's a highly discretionary decision, the standard of review is highly deferential, and the Court of Appeals isn't gonna end up overturning anything that I do. And you can send me any sort of resolution that you want, you can engage in as much political theater as you want, but it's not gonna end up making a difference to the circuit court judge, and it's not gonna make a difference to the Court of Appeals. So, everyone is trying to move on this and we have ended up being in a position where we have ended up having progress. And unfortunately, this is what ends up happening when issues aren't addressed over the course of decades. And then when they end up being addressed, I mean, my understanding that we've had some of these drain issues and there were some drain issues that were addressed in property in Dearborn, and it took a few decades for that to end up being resolved. And that's, that's unfortunately the nature of some of these proceedings.
Mr. Chairman, we have to try.
Oh, yeah, we are.
We have to try. And we've done nothing since 2009 when we sued and won the consent agreement. We've, we've acted in good faith as a city, we've allowed the county to show us proof, a movement. We fell asleep at the helm, at the wheel, and now it's time to put it in overdrive. We've got to do something. And I'm gonna be at this podium until we do something.
Good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
That's one, please.
By me, please, thank you. Just a question, and certainly, I know there's a lot of action, things that are happening, you know, that is important to move this forward and continue to drive it because the safety of our residents is very important, most important. And to see progress is imperative. But with this item, the request for resolution and to order all entities as outlined here, is this something the City Council would entertain in a study session, the next study session on next Tuesday? Certainly to take under consideration, into consideration as it is an important topic. I don't know if it would help us, I'm just suggesting.
Mr. Chair. Well, a couple of things. Number one, and I know Troy spent a lot of time on this, but yeah, to, what he's saying is that we would pass a resolution to ask the circuit court judge who arguably has jurisdiction in the case because of the prior action, to enter an injunction. Number one, he wouldn't have power to do that because it's, and so all of a sudden he would enter an injunction saying that the communities to the west of us can't dump their sewage into our sewage system, so, so.
It's not a sewer system. That is illegal to do what they're doing.
Is, is the mayor, the mayor and the council addressing the, you know, the flooding? Absolutely. This, just this particular language and this particular resolution.
So, I just picked the word that meant intervening on our behalf to stop something illegal.
And if I may, you know, when it says, "all facilities and all bodies of government", okay, that means we have to sue all facilities and all bodies of government. And do we even have all of the information to be able to make that kind of a determination? Though willy-nilly filing a lawsuit the next day, something along, that's consistent with this. I'm telling you, we're not gonna solve a problem, we're just gonna end up being looked at as being people who aren't thinking through things. And whoever's lawyer who ends up bringing it is gonna potentially get sanctioned for bringing a frivolous action because they haven't ended up doing enough homework to basically be able to make these allegations. All right? If we have the information, then we can proceed with something. If we know that there's someone who's polluting, then we potentially can end up looking at something with respect to that. But if we're in a position where we're saying these things and we're basing it on stuff that's not backed up by fact, we're gonna potentially end up having a lot more problems and not getting anywhere and potentially blowing our credibility with a circuit court judge that we're otherwise gonna be relying on.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Chairman, that's not willy-nilly. And I have the facts. And we don't have to, we don't, we already won the consent agreement. We're just asking you to enforce it and add.
But we're working on that.
We have a consent agreement, we have a consent agreement with the county, not with all facilities and bodies of government.
Chairman, the county controls
Private and public.
The whole drain district. They control it. If you wanted to, if you wanted to do something, you could redirect this from the judge and redirect it right to the, to Drain Commissioner. That would be an option. Again, I'm not the lawyer. But to do nothing, to say it's willy-nilly, to suggest that it's not backed up by facts is ignorance. It's willful ignorance.
No, it's not willful ignorance.
Anyone else?
Ray Muscat, Havelock Street. Along the same lines, I, I think, I appreciate corporate counsel, you know, and how you explain everything. But I think, you know, what we want as citizens is we want your backing 100%. To state a resolution to the county saying, hey, let's get off our duff is what we want you guys to do. I, I, like we, like he said, we're not lawyers. You, you know, you got two lawyers sitting up there right now. Come up with something. The wording in what Troy had may be completely off, but the meaning is there, okay? And what is Plan B if the county doesn't want to listen to us? When they build that new shopping center out on Vining Road, what's our alternative? Is, is there something legally that you can do now to make sure that they don't, the way they drain isn't going to affect us?
Mr. Chair.
I mean, it's still in the planning stages, so I don't know if you can look at it and say, hey, we need to look at this and see what we can do to stop it from drowning us.
They're gonna have to have retention basins on the property. It's a law, they have to do that.
I, I, I understand that.
Have to retain.
I understand that, but.
I think Dan Brooks might have some input.
Dan, you wanna have a quick comment on that? Do you have the mic?
As part of the permitting process, they, they will have to get a stormwater permit. And their discharge from outside will be no greater than the current discharge.
Right.
If the vacant land right now is discharging, tends to see faster flow. That's how much flow will be coming out of that system fully developed. They'll have detention basins outside to control that flow. All right? And the other part on the sanitary discharges, if there's a sanitary discharge to the creek, it has to be reported to D E Q. All right? You know, this resolution was on sanitary discharges only. That was written, that was called by Mr. Brown.
But it's, and it's happening, you know, and we know it's happening.
Right. But there's not, you're not gonna control the discharge coming out of the Kelly drain or the discharge coming out of one of the drains out of the Rock. It's only sanitary discharge. Potentially Jackson, Jackson Street can discharge. I checked with the county, Banner Street discharge has been eliminated, it's no longer there. All right? Potentially may have some illegal discharges, but they have to be reported. So there is a mechanism in place now to report those discharges.
Problem is, the illegal discharges are done and then they report it after they do it, which doesn't help the people down in the South End when they get everybody's sewage in their living rooms and their basements and kitchens and every place else, it's already done. Oh, I reported it, I'm, I'm, I'm all set, ready to go, because I reported it. I think it's horsepucky. Okay? And, and I know it doesn't affect me as much on the North End as far as that Ecorse Creek drain, but I think we had a death in this last flood, didn't we not? We had a death. So what more do we need other than a loss of human life? We have a loss of human life. And if that's not good for an attorney, I don't know what the hell is. We might as well just pack up our whole government and go to Russia. Seriously, I understand what you're saying, but somewhere along the line, somebody's gotta have enough gumption to go and say, hey, we gotta do this. So, I feel bad for you, Troy, and I know you and Suzanne are doing some great work, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Heidi Brown, I live at 23420 Hanover, and I happen to be Troy's wife. And so I would just like to speak to all of you this evening. My question is, you know, you've been, a few of you have said that you would never live in a home with a basement. When we looked at Dearborn Heights, we were looking for a place to care for my mother-in-law. And so the home that we had had a place for her to separate, to be, for the family to come in and visit with her. We were there seven years and I cared for her 24/7. That was the reason we picked that home in Dearborn Heights. And so, you know, we didn't choose to pick a home with a basement. We picked it because of what we had to do at that time, to move in two families together and care for her for seven years. When we lost that day, we had also gone through a couple other floods before 2011. It was water in our basement, we took care of it. We didn't make claims, we dealt with it. But then this one hit and it took two floors of our home. And so my question to you is, we had a place to stay that time. Thank goodness I was taking care of a gentleman who, the home became available, so we were displaced for a month and a half, which was, we took care of that. But what if this happens again? Do you have any counsel for us as to what we're going to do, where we're going to go? You know, we have two children that we're still raising, two teenagers that went through it. I had my grandson there that day. Can we come stay with you? I mean, what, what are we going to do if it happens again? And the question, or the answer is that you've told us, it's going to happen again. So protect ourselves. So do you have any, I, I'm looking to you, I'm praying for all of you because I know it's not easy. I know that your frustrations are beyond what you can handle at the moment, but, I mean, we're praying, and I don't want to cause problems, but I'm really here with a heartfelt question. What are we going to do if it happens again? How do we protect ourselves in the home that we love, that we've had memories and that every piece of seven and a half years that I cared for my mother-in-law is gone? I mean, the, the, just everything, it's gone. So.
Okay.
There's no answers. No answers, okay.
We're working, doing our best we can.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street. Mr. Brooks replied that Wayne County told him, there's no discharge. I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, but that's like asking the weasel to take an egg count in the hen house. I come from agricultural family, so I tend to use those kind of comments. I visited Troy and Heidi's house yesterday. And they are just now in the process of getting it back together. I was sick to my stomach at what they showed me happened. It was awful. I don't think anybody here, sitting at this table, can imagine what these people are going through. I thought a flooded basement was bad. It ain't nothing. I thank God that my basement, not my basement, but my, my relatives' basements have only flooded. They had sewage, they had dead fish, dead rat, they, they found crawfish. That was in their houses. This is in the, this is not in their basement, this was in the space that they live. And something has to be done. I mean, we can't, we can't even find sandbags because people are thinking about sandbagging their houses. Is the city gonna help, help them there? Help them get sandbags? What about a boat for the South End? We don't even have a boat to rescue people with. Something has to be done. We just can't be dismissed. These people cannot be dismissed. It's terrible what they're having to live with. And the real problem is, it's the fear, every time it rains, every time it rains, oh dear God, is this gonna be the time? Would any of you up there want to live in those circumstances? I don't think so, especially if you've gone through what Troy and Heidi have gone through. So, if we seem a little angry, it's because we are. Because every raindrop that comes down brings fear and trepidation to the people. It's terrible. It's an awful way to live. Knowing that this problem, if it is approved, is gonna take eight to 10 years to solve and then, for the next eight to 10 years, fearing every rainfall that comes. Something has to be done now. And it, and, and you're the only people that can help us. You're the only ones. And sitting waiting for this or that, judge, fine. Why not take out a loan and then when, when the loans are approved, well then you can pay it off. Fix the problem. Get these people out of danger. Thank you.
Anyone else? Does she bring anything before us? Anyone else? Anyone else?
Go adjourn.
Most of my counsel in Horvath.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, all in favor of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.